Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Here.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here. All right, looks like we have a quorum and I do believe Councilman Shaw is here, just not present and accounted for. So, all that be said, Mayor, if you want to start us off?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Council, you have several things in front of you, but there's three different sets of papers. So, let me start with, in this case, we're going to go with the first two sheets fairly quickly, in the sense of, the first sheet is the finances. And, right now, it's the finances for options one, two, and three. Which, the next question is, I thought we only had two options. So, we now have three options, and we want to present those tonight. One and two, a one-story in left field, a four-story in left field, are both still, obviously, well on the table. And Gerald will explain here in a second how we'll work through those. The first one-story is taking a relook at the stadium, any other way we could do things, and tying that together with Gerald taking a look at what it was going to take to do this stuff out in left field. And what we found is, and I think he'll show you, there is another way to utilize the existing stadium, and in turn, probably do it at the least cost and the least invasive piece to baseball. So, he's going to present the three of those. We then, you know, these three money options, all three show how we would pay for each one of those, with whichever one you would start with. The second sheet, the group, is where it starts with to-do list for construction to start. That's the nuts and bolts of how we would work through the process that Megan and team will lead to get us to legally make each and every one of these happen. And so, we'll go back to those.
For staff, parents?
So, both takes care of the money side and the how we'd get it done side, once you guys have seen what those three options are. And then, we in turn, John, probably go to some discussion and go any direction you would want to go from there. So, I kind of like then to bring Gerald up. He's the one who's dug into this. He's the one that has worked, not only with BallCorp, with our architects, with Major League Baseball. And Gerald, if you can give him an idea of, you know, kind of the synopsis of how we get through the three of these. That's your third set of sheets, guys, where it says Toyota Field modifications. There you go.
In your agenda packet that I printed out for you, if you look at the second sheet, so, do an overview of the options.
Hey Gerald, you got the clicker right there. I'm not sure if it's turned on or not.
On the side?
On the side, right there.
Yeah.
Little red button goes up. There you go.
All right. So, we'll look at the options and the details of those. So, option one in this package is existing maintenance facilities utilization. Option two is the one-story building in left field. Option three is the full build with the four-story and the parking lot implementation details. So, if you look at each one of them under estimated completion schedule, we can convert the existing maintenance facility by April 2026. The one-story building by April 2026. First floor of the full build by April 2026. And then, floors two to four, January 2027. So, the estimated cost on reutilizing the maintenance facility is $4 million. $7 million for the one-story in left field, and $25 million in construction cost on the four-story full build. So, you have advantages to each one of those. So, on the reutilization of the maintenance facility, the ability to construct without delay caused by stadium events, and to work around those schedules, because we would first build a new maintenance facility across the driveway from the current one and repurpose that building that's currently there. We'd have no disruption to the field or the concourse level for that. And also, it meets the Major League Baseball requirements for additional space. Under the one-story build in left field, you have the ability to have additional playing services on the football games there by moving that outfield ball. And it also meets the Major League Baseball requirements. Option three, which is the full build, you meet everything on option two, plus you have an opportunity for increasing revenue, both to the city and to the team. Disadvantages, under the reutilization of the maintenance building, you don't have any real return on investment for that. Disadvantage to option two is the delay in construction by stadium events. We have to work around what events they're going to have. So, we have days that we cannot work because of things going on there at the field. Same thing with the full build on option three. All right. So, option one details existing maintenance facility. We're going to convert the maintenance facility area to the visitor locker room. That's $3 million in cost. Build a new 5,000-square-foot maintenance building across the driveway from the current building for $1 million. Construction drawings and bid package for this building would take four to five months, according to the current architect that we're using. We'd have those in the June timeframe. Awarded construction project, if we use this, in July, construction eight to 10 months, completion April 2026. If we have city council final direction by January 2027. This is outlining a map of what that building works at currently. So, it's just outside the left-field fence. It has a...
Yeah. So, if y'all look, so if y'all look at, here's the tunnel that comes in from the maintenance area today. We repurpose that building here, the new building across the driveway, 25,000 square foot building.
So, this is the footprint of what we were, are planning on constructing today in the left field. We would take that footprint and put in that current building. We would have to add 600, 700 square feet. If you see on the right side where it says 440 square feet for the laundry room, we would have to add that to the maintenance. All the requirements that we need. All right. Option two detailed. So, it's an estimated cost of $7 million. We need to modify the contract with the architect for the one-story construction. We're only currently under contract for the four-story building with architect. We build that building in the left-field outfield there. We would add the removal outfield fence to accommodate for the football games. Ability to add three floors in the future. Leasing for the one-story would be April 2026. That gives you an outline of where the building is going to go.
So, this is your current whole engine, this is the house in the building.
It's just an overlay. So, with that demolition that we've already got, set the bid package be open on 23rd of January, each one of those notes is something that we have to move currently during construction, whether that's drainage, electrical, fiber, whatever that is. So, it's just, just want y'all to understand the complexity of having to disrupt that. All right. Option three. Currently under contract with the architect, current schedule, the demolition bid is set to open January 23rd, 2025. Release the bid package March 12th of 2025. Bid opening April 9th. Bid award April 28th. Completion of the visitor locker room, which is the first floor, of 2026, April 2026. Remaining three floors, January 2027, with estimated construction cost of 25 million. There's a rendering of what that building will look like. Then, here's the partial...
Gerald, can you go back for just a half-second, please? Thank you. I'm good.
She's got it.
So, this is the parking lot. This is the land that we're purchasing beside the stadium. And this would be the future parking lot when we decide to finish it out with lighting landscape. So, the land was $4 million. We could do a partial on it now, pay part of it, grab the other part for about 1.5 million. Full lighting, landscape, everything, about 3.5 million total. I'll answer any questions.
Gerald, I've got a, I think, just a couple. I'm going to make sure I'm comparing apples to apples. So, you said we are currently on contract with the architects to do the plans and everything for the four-story.
Yep.
For the, I don't know why I keep wanting to think, excavation, but the...
ERP, the demo?
No, I'm having a hard time of words, though. Existing maintenance, not even the same word, not even close, but sorry. In the existing maintenance and the one-story, in those estimated costs, do you have included in there the sunk cost from the drawings now, plus whatever construction drawings we would need to have and/or demo in order to execute those? Is that part, is that cost baked in?
I don't have the sunk cost of what you've already committed to. I do have the construction drawings and the bid package for each one of those in those two numbers.
Okay.
The four million and the seven million.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was all I had on that, off the top of my head.
Gerald, I have a question for you. You showed us the picture with all of the things that are going to have to be moved, all of the electrical boxes and all that. And you had shown us previously some of the pictures of the existing wiring boxes and such, and they are not optimal, to say the least.
We'll have some challenges, yes.
Yes, they're very challenged. So, because they are very challenged at this point in time, do they need to be redone regardless of which option we go with?
If we choose to do option one, we probably, in the near future, would take, or recommend taking some money from the maintenance account to rework those.
So, so, yes, we would need to redo those regardless of which option we went with. So, that's not really a deciding factor.
No, it's just a challenge.
It's just like, the parking lot is going to be pretty much the same, no matter which option we go with.
Those two things that you're referring to are probably $50,000, $75,000 to fix.
And the maintenance fund is $300,000, so it's well-covered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Minimum annually.
Exactly, yeah. Very good.
If we choose to do the one-story and at some point add the three stories, how much extra would it cost if we waited? Or is that included in the number you're giving us?
That would, that number would roll back into future costs. Okay? So, I believe in our schematic design, our design development, which we looked at six, seven months ago, we'd asked the contractors to give us a number if we didn't do it all at one time.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I don't have that with me, but I think that's somewhere $800,000, $900,000 if we do the base building now and then we decide to add on to it later. We would have to go ahead and make provisions for an elevator shaft there on the south side. So, we would have to, in essence, punch that through at a later time to build that shaft that's going up to do that. Plus, you'll have to do some waterproofing and stuff if you just done the one-story now and have a watertight building, if you follow what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay. It doesn't sound like it's a huge number, or it would be something like, yeah, why would we want to put that off?
It's not cost prohibitive, but it is a fact.
It's a number, but it's not cost prohibitive. Thank you.
But is it not true, if that was put off for 10 years, it could be more?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Than a million dollars? Because we're talking just south of a million dollars.
Yeah.
Additional price, but that would have to be in the near term that that was decided.
Every time people were mobilized, it cost money. Here you go.
Yeah. You build stuff that you'd have to go back and demo later.
I think the main difference on that, if you wait, I don't think you're going to get a backstop in the future like you do now. So, even though the building doesn't change a lot, the cash, the cash difference will be huge. I think at that point, the city pays 100% of it. I don't know, I can't speak for BallCorp, but I don't, I don't know if they would backstop it in the future.
They'd be benefiting from it in the future, too. Even if they didn't do it right now, that's...
And just to recap what we've talked about before, only with the third project will BallCorp financially support us.
Correct.
And they will support about 20%, is what I was thinking it would be, like they were at 6 million of our 30 million. Is that right?
I don't know the exact number. I mean, we've got some stuff, we can pull up and show kind of what some of that is. I don't, I haven't added, added up exactly what that looks like.
But nothing for the first two?
Right.
No support?
Okay. Any other questions on the building side of things from Gerald's side? I mean, he can obviously come back up if he needs to. All right?
Thank you, Gerald.
So, you want to go, which side do you want to go next? John, you got something to show?
We'll go there in just a minute, but Roger, I think you have some stuff financially prepared.
I've got it here. So, you guys have it right here. It's in front of you, the three different sheets. It shows you financially how, you know, we would fund this. So, I'll let you guys look at that. The one, the one thing I have in these sheets with options one and two, because option three, as we all know, BallCorp has said, they will backstop it. So, you take the total number of what the four-story is going to cost, add it to the bond of what we currently have, take the revenues that lodging tax generates, they take the backstop from there. So, that's, that's option three, and that's always, always been talked about. One of the reasons that they're looking to do that in meeting with Greg is BallCorp's goal was to get down to a million dollars. I want to say this, though. I think it's always been to be a million dollars. What I really do appreciate about the Trash Pandas, and when I say Trash Pandas and BallCorp, it's that crew, is when we put the contract in place for the stadium, the one concern was, you know, what if attendance kind of goes down? It's always going to start up here, and it's going to go down a little bit. So, if we take out a bond at that level, we want that to make sure we've got money every year. And so, what they agreed to was a million dollars a year for 30 years. That was the minimum that they looked at. But that was always their goal, was to get to that. And so, as we look at options one and two, one of the things that I had in here was starting at the million dollars. Right now, they're generating about 1.5, 1.6. So, if we were not to go forward, what I had in here, just to show you guys, and I won't call it a worst-case scenario, I would call it a partnerships, a partnership scenario, is we would take, each year with option, either one of the option ones, they would only pay a million dollars. Because, again, they're not generating that much more revenue. That's, I won't call it a worst-case, it's a partnership. So, and when you look at your sheets, if you decided, no, I just want to keep it the way it is, you can add about $500,000 to $600,000 a year on what's being generated right now, if that helps you any with the three options. So, money-wise, though, in Roger's presentations, the great thing, and what I really appreciate about where we are, is we have options. You know, we can make this work. It's really just a matter of where do you guys, as the city council, feel like the best investment is of these three options? And I think Roger's shown you that all three of them can be taken care of. Option three, with the strong support of BallCorp's taken the difference, the overage, until it gets down to a million dollars, at which point we're where we want to be. So, money-wise, it can work, and the kind of the front sheet gives you a synopsis of where that money comes from.
Yes. If we do, whichever of these we do, will we be changing the contract with BallCorp? Or is it dependent only on if we do the fourth addition?
That's a great question, which leads you to the third set, set of sheets here, and that is how you would legally make this work. And the answer is, in most instances, yes, in some form or fashion, we would, with some of those, clean some stuff up. We don't have to if we do options one or two. You don't have to. But we, again, we want to work with them on a couple of different things. But we don't have to.
Is it expected? I don't know. I'm asking.
Megan?
Is it expected that we will change contracts regardless of what we do?
We'll have to make some contractual adjustments regardless of the option chosen, but when it comes to the third option and the four-story build, you know, we're about 90% negotiated on that one. We haven't had complete discussions with BallCorp yet on what the agreements look like under options one and two. So, that's to be determined, based on the direction you give us tonight.
Okay. Well, I would just like to remind everybody what is in that contract. And when we go with this contract, they take away the sharing of the fees that we used to get, that we would have, that we are getting now, and it comes to over a million dollars. Okay? Well, with the new contract, they now, BallCorp shall be entitled to collect and retain all revenues received from the operations of venue regardless of its source, including but not limited to all city events, team events, BallCorp home, baseball games, parking, naming rights, signage, permanently affixed venue signage, scoreboard advertising, ticket sales and licenses, suite and clubhouse and sub-licenses, souvenirs and other merchandise, concessions, programs, hospitality, catering and pouring of beverages, advertising revenue, other vending and licensing revenue, exterior and I-565 signage, scoreboard advertising, broadcasting rights, advertising, and all other operating revenues from all BallCorp home baseball games and BallCorp non-baseball events. BallCorp shall retain all revenues from novelties and souvenirs from all city events. BallCorp payment shall be limited to the venue lease fees. Notwithstanding this section, BallCorp shall remit applicable sales taxes, liquor taxes proceed to the city in accordance with state and local law. City shall credit BallCorp the applicable sales tax proceeds that BallCorp has paid for, of the venue for the purpose of calculating the venue leases fee. So, all that comes down to, and there's more to it, there's other things, but all it comes down to is, right now, we're receiving over a million dollars. With this contract, we will only receive the money from the licensing, the venue licensing fee. And so, but, all those other fees will continue to go up. BallCorp will continue to take in all that revenue. We will only be getting, in the end, a million every time. That doesn't really seem to me like that works in the benefit of the city.
Yes, the financial arrangements will change a good bit from the 2018 to the 2024 agreement. However, under the current form of agreement that we're looking at for the four-story scope, yes, $1 million would be a minimum, but it would be worked down to over time. So, they would be helping the city to shore up the bond payment for the construction of the chosen scope, and they would make sure to shore up, you know, anything that the city did not have taken care of with the lodging tax and sales taxes contributing.
And I do appreciate that, but this is just the way I'm looking at it personally. It's almost as if you pick the pocket and then you give the money back, and then, yeah, we'll add on the first years, but in the end, they're using our million dollars to pay us a million dollars. That's how I'm reading this. Perhaps somebody else has read something different into it. I don't know. I've read either what the contract says. We lose a lot in fees by going forward with this. And then, if we only do the one story, you know, we'll, and we don't have a change to the contract, we get all that money every year. We'll get over a million, and as it grows. So, we still are bringing in money to pay the million, even if we go for the one option, go for the one-story option, or just the maintenance option, if we do not change the
Yes, depending on team revenues.
So, that's, that's where I kind of have a hiccup in this whole thing.
As I was reading the original agreement and then trying to do the was-is between the original agreement and this one, within Article Four, there was one section that was removed. Originally, the maintenance fund, I think, was subsection E, and the new one, it's subsection D. I'm trying to get at what was removed, but then, at the same time, now I'm having a senior moment. It's awesome in public.
I'll have to look back at the complete redlined version to remember that.
Yeah. Okay. And do you remember?
I think it may have been related to items preliminary to the original ballpark construction, because in the current iteration of the agreement, you know, we've stripped out a lot of the preconditions to the original construction. So, the numbering may be different.
I got you.
And lettering may be different because of that. So, I'll take a look and let you know.
No, that's good. And then, I did, trying to clarify, in, I think, the subsection B, I think, of the original, now it's maybe subsection A or something, but it talks about, it's not the maintenance fund, but it's like capital maintenance, something or another, and it says, basically, we will take care of the maintenance and we'll hold things compliant. Right now, it says, we shall make it compliant with MLB requirements. In the original agreement, it says, we'll make it first-class, I think. I don't want to quote it, but very close to like first-class baseball facility. Do you remember how we defined that then versus now? To me, MLB requirements and then first-class may be two separate things.
We didn't have a specific definition for first-class under that 2018 agreement, but it, that wording was based on, you know, the fact that the architect had come up with a ballpark plan that was at the forefront of, you know, architectural standards at that time.
Okay. And those architectural standards, but those were things that, trying to understand, we built them originally to minor league baseball requirements, so that we would be compliant with those at that time. And then, the fact that MLB bought minor league and changed requirements, whether it's us or Jim Bob down the corner that has a baseball stadium, they all surprise.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
All right. So, under the part where it says city maintenance, under that section of the contract, it says that it will be in compliance with MLB facility standards going forward. So, now, the next time any of this comes up, there won't be any discussion about how or what. We will just have to pay anything that matters, that the, that the major league says that we have, that the stadium has to have, because now in this contract, it says very specifically. Am I understanding that correctly?
The city doesn't have control over Major League Baseball standards, that's right.
No, but if it's in the contract...
But I believe we would have a lot of say in the how and what, and we would be able to discuss the options with our partners and Major League Baseball, just like we've done with these three options.
Even though the contract will explicitly say Major League Baseball standards?
Yes, because that's the governing authority of the whole enterprise.
I mean, no is always an option. And then, it's always also, we have a challenge, and we have partners, and let's figure out how to get there. And just like now, I mean, honestly, you ask a question, no is also an option. Remember, we're not going to do anything. But everything you do has consequences, good or bad. And we talked about this earlier today. I mean, if we do nothing, or we don't meet the schedule, we are at risk of being fined. And that, I mean, that just carries with it consequences.
I understand, but if we do the story, or we do one story, we do the maintenance, then we're fine without connecting the whole future to whatever it is that Major League Baseball says we have to do.
Yeah. And we'll say this, and Garrett helped me... Yeah, and we'll say this, and Garrett helped me make the phone call to the gentleman with major league baseball who, talking about this compliance piece, two things he said is, one, obviously, again, as we've talked about, you know, there's a lot of why. One, it's the change, there's a lot, they want to take, make sure facilities are set up for females, that's both coaches and umpires. Secondly, again, it's no longer big clubhouse for the home team, little bitty clubhouse for the, for the visitors. They're competing against college, and now, what is it, NIL? Between NIL and all, they want people to come into the minor leagues and keep those types of things going. I, I think when you keep saying we got to, it's an investment that we're making to keep a minor league baseball team here. You are correct in what you say. There's no, I mean, they absolutely hold us accountable. One of the examples would be, and then what he also told us is, they look at these things about every five to seven years. They take a good look at everything based on, you know, everything moving forward and making sure that they're keeping safety at, at the forefront. An example would be netting. Things completely changed from the time that we built that stadium. There's now, in every ballpark you go to, netting all the way down left field. Take it terrible, how are we going to get a foul ball? But in this case, it's a safety requirement. So you are, you are absolutely correct in what you're saying, but they are, they are looking to take that into consideration, and, and they look every five to seven years, instead of every year, we're going to do this.
I can appreciate that, but I am looking out for the taxpayers of the city and the citizens, and I do not want to put an extra burden on them, because we're putting wording in here that in the future, they will have to, somebody will have to be held accountable for.
Sure. And I would look at that the same way that we just did a safety compliance audit of every facility that we have, fire station, city hall, and we are doing the same thing there to make sure both our employees and the citizens are safe. So it's not just the stadium, it's every facility we have.
I know, but the services are very, very important to the citizens.
You're making a good point, Karen. We're not going to argue with you. It's just, it's for everything, and it's the investment portion of it, but you are correct, they could come back and say whatever they want to.
If I can.
It's fluid. You know, it's a fluid situation.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you, well, name, image, likeness, you got now, all of a sudden, the NCAA is saying, if you go to JuCo, it doesn't count towards your eligibility. That whole, that whole dynamic is going to change the forefront a lot, all the way to the minors and majors. All that being said, though, Roger did a really good job of putting, putting forward here some of the details on the financial thing, financial aspect of this, of all options. There's some additional details, though, that we have that was also set to council as part of that, and I'd like to bring up, and Councilman Shaw can help go through as well. Chris, if you can bring up that Excel file. And it'll go, I think, it'll help on some of these, actually go into some of the further details behind it as well. They may not jive down to the penny, but based on a lot of the same information and everything, so if you can.
If we can click on, on that return analysis, on the very first tab at the bottom. So we worked with Mark and with Joel Lamp at the Huntsville Madison County Visitors Bureau and did Roger's numbers, and tried to come up with, at the time we did this, there wasn't any talk of a option one. It was only one story or four story. And we looked through what it looked like, pros and cons, what is our revenue, what are our expenses over the life of it, what makes business sense for, for the city. And so if you look up here, it talks through one story and four story, all the way down. So you'd look at total revenue that we're expected to bring in on the one story over, over the, over the next 25 years is 115 million on the one story, and on the four story. We had 152, 266. So, you know, you have a 35-ish million dollar swing on the four story, and we talked through the expenses here, and can you scroll down on that? So we kind of show at the end, there's expenses on both as we go down, net income for both at the, at the life of the, at the end of the lease, and it may be extended. If we go on down, it'll, it'll give a total number. So we look at, at the assets, four-story, one-story, total city equity. So total return on, on a one-story is 118 million, total return on the four-story is 158.7, and this is at a 2.5, 2.45% growth rate. It's what we put this at. And then we can tab on any, any of those other ones on how, how we got those numbers as far as tax growth schedule. So we, we added outside, outside revenue that is also outside the stadium, and so we, that's how we worked with Joel on this a good bit, and with Roger, and, and with Mark, on number of events, how many do you think we're going to use? How much of these suites going to be used and that, and that type of stuff? So we back up, I think all this has been sent to council to kind of show all, all these numbers. And that's where, for me, it's hard to say, hey, we're going to do an option that doesn't, that doesn't generate any, any revenue. I know option three is, is more expensive, but it generates a tremendous more, more money, and it, and it pays for itself. If you do option one or option two, it's just sunk money. So to me, if I have to spend money, I'd rather spend more and get a return than I had just spend it with no, with no return on it. So to me, I mean, we, we have to look at this as a business deal. You know, is Ball Corp going to make money on it all? You know, yes, and, you know, but are we going to make money and it pay for ourselves? Yes. So I mean, I, to me, to me building the four stories is, makes the most sense. I look at it on the business side, and if I was, if I owned the stadium and I looked at it, I, I would, I would do that, knowing we're going to make an additional 40 million dollars at a 2.45% growth rate, which we've never had one that small in years and years and years. So I think we try to put in worst-case scenario.
I've looked at those numbers, too. I've looked at, back in my other career, I did investment analysis, and I look at that sort of thing. But I think you're only putting in, the difference is going to be seven suites, okay? How are those seven suites alone, because that's really what you're adding, bringing in that much extra money? I can see a lot of money coming in just to go to Town Madison. I can see a lot of extra money coming in on other ways, just because we have a really good stadium, and it is an absolute wonderful stadium now. And we can add one story, put some eating, something on the top, do something like that, without having to go to the greater expense of 20 million dollars at least in order to put in seven suites. Now, I understand Ball Corp, they make a lot more money on suites, and I appreciate that. But again, we've lost those, all we're going to get is tax money off of that, okay? We're not going to be getting all of the increase that comes in from the suites. So I appreciate their side of it, but for the citizens, for the citizens who pay for these things with their taxpayer dollars, I just, we're not here to be investors. I used to do that in my other life. We are here as city council people to look over the needs of our citizens, to make sure they have the fire, and they have the police, and they have all the things that they need. To me, that's the first responsibility. We have a great stadium as it is, proud of our stadium, I go there to the games. I just cannot, in my mind, justify seven suites at that much more money as being a good thing for the citizens at this point. And if we do it for one story, and they find five years from now, yeah, this really is great. Yeah, it might cost another million, but then it makes more sense. I just don't see it at this point, not when we are still paying on a 35 million dollar bridge, not when we were still paying for the other things that we have to down at Town Madison. All that money has to be paying those things off, too, to go further into debt. For me, I just don't see it as a wise choice at this particular moment.
I disagree with you as far as the investor part. I think that that is part of our job, is to be investors and, and to invest in the city. My concern is the proportion between the city's investment and Ball Corp's investment. You know, I was talking with my husband earlier about it, and talking about the decision, and I said, you know, when you and I got married, you made more money than I did, but the money went into our joint checking account to pay the bills, and anything left over went into a savings account, and we were partners from the start. I spent more money than he did, he made more money than I did, it was a great, great system. I'm not really seeing that relationship right now with Ball Corp. And, you know, can you explain a little bit more about the backstop? I, I understand that Ball Corp, and you can, you'll explain it better than I can, that they will help cover it, but why can we not get the money upfront? And we say to Ball Corp, this building is going to cost 23 million 500, or 24 million, we'll put up 12, you put up 12, and, and do away with the backstop? And I know that that's throwing apples into our fruit basket right now and throwing things off, but can you better explain that so I can understand the whole backstop thing and why they aren't putting up much, as much as we are? They're putting up, if we're putting up 24, if it's 20, the cost is 24, and they're putting up six, you know, it seems disproportionate to me.
But the first several years, like Ball Corp is paying 2.3 million dollars to start off with. That's not a million, that's 2.3 million. And you know, when you get down to year 12, that is where they come back to where they're paying, what they're paying us now. And then, if you go down to year 17, which is the one right above the little black box, that is 1.046 million. And then it doesn't go until year seven, I mean, 18, it doesn't go to a million, below a million.
Right.
So they're, and at that point, they still have to pay us a million.
Right.
So all of these years between zero and 12, they're paying over and above, because it's 2.3 million, 2.2 million, 2.1 million, 2.1 million, 2 million.
Can we pull the sheet up, so?
You want option three? Option three, please.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful.
So we're looking, each year, they're putting in more than a million dollars, and some years, much more than a million dollars. So yes, right now, we're getting 1.4, 1.5 million.
All the way over to the far right, guys.
But.
Not that far.
Not that far. Row R.
Yeah.
There you go.
So, so they are coming in at the first, see that 2.3 million dollars? That's not a million.
Last year, we got 1.5.
1.5, well, 1.6, basically 1.6.
We got 1.6 last year.
Right. Every year, we've gotten a million, I think, except the first year, the COVID year, which...
But that's what, and that's what's coming from, from Ball Corp. So that's what the backstop means, is they're paying the difference between what we're earning and the, the bond payment. And that 2.3 million dollars is coming out of Ball Corp's pocket, and they don't get back to where they are right now for 12 years.
So they're paying more than the 6 million of the 24 million?
Right.
Okay. And that was a figure from a long time ago, so things have changed. Okay.
There, there are a lot of moving pieces on this, and it's a wonder any of us can remember any of it right now.
It is, but if I could just remind you that 2 million dollars, 1 million of it is money they're now holding that we used to get, so they are really out of pocket, because they're, they're holding on to that million now. They're only going to be paying us 1.3.
Okay, so they're going to pay you 1.6 million dollars over what you're getting now for the next, we'll call it 10 years, that's 13 million dollars. Let me, I mean, and I want to, I want to go back to a point you said that we don't invest, okay?
Oh, I didn't mean it quite like that, because if we invested on...
Let me finish, please.
Okay.
We, we do one of three things with money here. We spend it, and we spend it on operation cost. We save it, and we don't do anything with it, and just let it sit, you know, and collect some interest. Or we invest it, and that investment goes into roads, we invest into, you know...
Employees.
Well, that's, that's an operation cost. We invest into buildings, you know, that we, all kinds of buildings.
Right.
Our houses.
You're right.
You know, all kinds of things.
You're right, and I had this discussion earlier.
So we do, those are the three things we do. And if we, if we were, let's just take, take this complete thing out of it, and let's say that there's a hotel that wants to come in, and they're going to buy, they're going to, they're going to build a hotel on a piece of property that is owned by the city, and they're going to operate that hotel, and they're going to get revenue. And they're going to do that for 20 years. And at the end of that 20 years, they've shared some of the revenue with you, and they give you the building back. It's your building. Would you do that?
Apples to oranges, but yeah.
You would.
I mean, that, that's fine, but that's not really what we're talking about here, because...
No, no, that's exactly what we're talking about.
No, because what else are you going to do at the baseball stadium? You can't turn it into something else.
But that's exactly what we're talking about.
But, but...
Is your, is someone's building a building, and you're, you're, you know, you're getting it back. Hold, hold on a second, though. I mean, that, the statement you just made is just factually incorrect. We can go down the street, and everybody wants to use Huntsville Stars as, as a, a reason to not have baseball in Madison, but yet, they just took that big frickin' lemon and turned it around into a minor league soccer, and they're having one heck of a season. They had a season last year. So to say that we, we could have an empty stadium and nothing to do with it is just factually incorrect, okay? So there are opportunities there that we can do. I mean, there's a whole bunch, and we have example, not just but a few miles down the road. So all that being said, and I don't, great discussion, right? And I will say, I think, I don't remember, Colin, you may have said this, but I will say, for, for, for me, trying to go through all this and get everything pulled together so I can at least get out to everybody, kind of what's the baseline, that was a configuration nightmare, or configuration management nightmare. But I will say, none of that was information we didn't already have. Every bit of that, except for the one email that I forgot to forward on 31 December from Megan that said, hey, here's where we're at, and I did forward that, everything else, we already had, is already in our emails. I just pulled from that and made sure I had the latest and greatest. So all that being said, I'd like to understand, for staff's sake, for our sake, so we can move forward in some direction. Right now, we're on a path to go the four-story. So I'd like to be able to hear, meet you all, where are you at, and see where the majority's at, so that we can give staff, this is the path we're headed down.
I'd like to hear from Renee.
We got about 11 minutes. So between now and then, everybody take about a minute, minute and a half, and yes, Renee, I'd love to hear from you, you haven't asked any questions, but let's take about a minute and a half, two minutes, something like that, between now and then, and let's get it out where we're going, so that we can also start our next meeting on time.
I'd like to begin by asking the mayor's office their recommendation.
What's that? I'm sorry.
I'd like to ask the mayor's office your recommendation.
Hmm. You know, I think in this case, and I don't get a vote, but I definitely lay this out there. First, you know, there's a couple of givens. One, I, I want everybody to know, Ball Corp is a great partner, and whatever we decide, I think they'll continue to be that, and I want to do whatever we do to help them be successful. Secondly, I, I agree a lot of what Karen said as far as the stewardship of money. And I think the last thing is, I'm really proud that, that what we put in place, we have options. What are, and when you say what my recommendation is, I think it's a personal recommendation. I don't even think it's a mayor's recommendation. I don't think it comes out of our office recommendation. But when I found out how difficult, well, first and foremost, when I found out that the structure of what we were looking to do no longer was the partnership of continuing to build the money together, that all the lodging tax and all that money was going to go to pay for that, and then, and then we bring Ball Corp's number down, I was happy that the, the investment they've made of 12-point, something million dollars. I guess all that to say, but I also was looking for something else. It's such a difficult thing to do with the one-story and the four-story. I kept going back to Gerald and Mary Beth and anybody else, that's why it's taken so long. What, how can we possibly make this work? And we found a way to make it work for the minimal cost, which gives us the flexibility. If we were to do this, my recommendation would be to do the, the maintenance piece of it, and then redo the Ball Corp's contract where we get them as close as we can to the million dollars. I mean, an example would be, we can spend the leasing... spend the least amount of money in the city and still help them make more money, which is what they're looking to do. And we both win by using lodging tax to go forward. So I would have gone for option one. But that is personal because I would like to see and have the flexibility to take the growth in the lodging tax, which is where a majority of that growth is going to go, and be able to use it where we want to use it for what we want to do. That would be my recommendation.
Is option one negotiated? I mean.
No.
In the buildings?
Two things aren't negotiated. One, when we say it's negotiated, one, option one, we don't have to change anything. I would not like to just do option one and not support our teammate in helping them to be successful in what they're trying to get down to. So that is not negotiated at all. You know, so option one, to me, would include the two of those things. If not, then I would go with option four. I think we have the ability to do it. I think you are correct when you go to.
Option three.
No, I'm sorry, option three, option three. Yeah, option four. Yeah, sorry.
Don't give us another option, please.
Three plus one. Three plus one. We're doing two.
Ask the player to be named later.
I'm sorry. Option three, because of all the things you guys have said. It is a good investment. I see it as going into something that continues to be the anchor for Town Madison. And when we get the interchange ramps there, together with the next 10 years in this community, to me, looking forward, it's a good investment. But starting off right now, that would be my first recommendation.
And is option one approved by MLB?
Uh, yes.
Will it satisfy?
I mean, we got the letter back from them saying that they see no reason why this can't work. If we went forward, we would actually nail that down. But we worked with the same person. It's the same very footprint as you guys saw and it's just moved over. And there's less infringement on the actual field itself. I forgot to mention one thing too. When we found out that the bullpens, we thought when all of this, when we were doing the one story, four story, options two and three, that we could put the bullpens on the field. Major League Baseball came back and said, no, you can't do that. That means we have to move them, which again, makes this more complex. I know we got a meeting, but that's where I went. So I go back to you.
Okay. Like each of you, I've been watching our sales tax receipts for the last four months. They reflect either flat or negative from same month comparisons from the year before. I'm concerned about inflation. I'm concerned about interest rates and what it costs. I don't think this is the time to go into debt on this significant a bond payment, seeing what I'm seeing right now. So that's where I'm at.
A second that.
All right.
I, you know, I said from the very beginning, I did not want to put the city into that much debt with the numbers that they were. I support doing what we have to do with Major League Baseball and support doing the maintenance shed, not to totally kill the four story, but definitely to leave that for down the road. That will solve the problem, the situation we have with Major League Baseball, without killing us.
Okay.
I also like that it puts it into the next city council after the elections. And let them run on it and say, hey.
You can't.
If this what you want.
Well, we can't do that. I mean, we have to do it with Major League Baseball.
Well, no, no, no. Go ahead and do the, do the maintenance. But just as far as the four story, let that be their decision later on. This gives us time. And she's right, numbers have not been looking good. So.
Okay.
So is that the consensus now?
No. We've only spoken, I think, to three and then the mayor. Not the mayor is, he's four.
Get a vote.
Right.
Mike, I have several concerns. I am concerned about the revenue, the way it's been coming in, flat or slightly down. But in the last 20 something years, our city has done very well of growing. We're still growing. The revenue, I mean, is this a blip? Is this because it was an election year? What is the cause of that? What's the driver for that? We don't know. That's an unknown. What makes me nervous about going with option one, which is the maintenance shed, is that is what I would call a duct tape option. That is making do. And the difference between the cost of the maintenance shed and the one-story building are not putting, it's not a whole lot of difference as far as the cost. Yes, it's five more years, but it's 3 million dollars. In the scheme of our budget, that is not huge. Is it, is it scary going out for option three? Yeah, that would be scary. But also, option three would bring in the opportunity for return on our investment. But it would also, by making it more attractive to bring in outside baseball events, would also make it more attractive to have other companies come and invest in that portion of our city around there, especially potentially over on Madison Boulevard, which has been a very difficult area for our city to get people to come in and invest.
Oh, I totally agree. Then they showed that so clearly in that.
May I finish, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had.
We've spoken.
So.
We got three minutes left.
So in wrapping this up, we're looking at just the numbers from the ball field. We're not including the money that's going to be spent in the shops. We're not including the money that's going to be spent in the restaurants. We're not including potential additional investments in our city, especially areas of our city that are difficult to get investments I would say, I just feel like we have to bet on our city. And we have to invest in our city. And therefore, I would go with the four story option.
Okay. Teddy?
I mean, it's always been easy for me. You know, this is no different than any project we've ever done. You know, Paul and I, we've had disagreements over the years and it's mainly because of personality. Mine is, you give me the data, I look at the data, it gives me a number and it says yes or no. Period. And that's what this says to me. And you know, it takes me back to, you know, I don't want to get pastoral here or anything else, but there was a pastor one time that says, you're either a living church or a dying church. And that's what we are. We're either going to live, we're going to invest, we're going to keep going, and we're going to do things. Or we're just not going to take opportunities. And I take us back to an opportunity we missed years ago, before any of us were on council. There's a Home Depot down the road, $150,000. They could have made an investment to put water in. And every bit of that tax revenue would have come to this city.
Mm-hmm.
So when you think about those things, think about opportunity costs, look at the numbers, the data tells you everything you need to know. So I'm for four story, have been.
Okay. Great.
No, I'm, I'm the same way. Looking at numbers, I mean, I do want to invest smart for the city and for the long term and for growth. As much growth as Madison has had over the years, I can't imagine we're not going to continue to grow. Rush, I think the letters from Rush have been sent out. Our financial advisor, Adam Montgomery, who we lean on, he sent two letters saying that this would be a good move for Madison. He said it would not affect any of our bonding in the future. If we did need for roads or for any other growth, this would not affect any of our other lending. If we needed a future bond, he said he would absolutely do this. And so leaning on Rush, leaning on these numbers, talking to everybody on council, I got to move forward with the four story.
Okay. All right. And I think as it was on the first item, I think I was the deciding factor there too. So I will say, from the standpoint of looking at everything, I've tried to look as objectively as possible, looking at all the data. For me, I look at it back in 2018. We had a big area that was a bunch of dirt and had a lot of potential, but really was not flourishing like we wanted it to. And we took a chance. And I think I had brown hair at that point. But we took a chance. And from that, we've seen a lot of return on that investment. So much so, I think we said last year, last year, this year, whatever year, yeah, last year, that we actually received excess revenue from, I keep calling it the mortgage payment, but it's the bond payment. But we received excess revenue. So I keep going down to looking at, okay, I got two one-story options and I got a four-story option. Look at the two one-stories. Look at the sunk cost plus what we estimate. I will say, I worry a little bit about the fidelity of the cost of the 5,000 square foot, knowing that we got to comply with the architectural standards. Understanding what James Clemens just paid for, or is in the process of paying for their hidden barn was about 2.9 million, starting off. So I just, I'm not saying, hey, your number's correct. I just worry about the fidelity in that and do we have the estimates right? So it does bring those cost estimates back kind of square. And then at that point, I go, okay, right now, we can't host other events in the stadium because we have a wall issue. It's not far enough. We can't do football. We can't do soccer. We can't do those other things. It's not just because we can't. It's NCAA and Alabama High School Athletics Association said, we ain't doing that again. We're not giving you a waiver. So we can't do those things. So then I go one story in the park, okay, can make some money, can maybe make some money back on it. But then when I compare that or contrast it to the four story, make a lot more money back. And then those monies can also go and help fund some other things. And so, yeah, how much of a bet do I want to make and gamble? At the end of the day, I look at it and I go, I like the four story. There's much more potential for return on the investment and much more path forward there. So that's just where I'm at, at this point. So I think at this point, what I tallied up here is we got about, we got four for option three and three for option one. So and then we got one that is for option one, but has more, we're going to be for option three.
One, but a 0.5 on the other one. So I mean, it's, all right. So we have clear direction. We know what we need to do. It's no different from where we've been headed. Each one of us, as you guys will see, when you go back to the data that you have, Megan gives a clear path on all the things that need to be done. I know we can't go through it now, but we can go through it again. It's not going to change, but we're on top of that part of it. And again, 90% of it's done working with Ball Corp's on what they have right now. So we'll continue down that path.
Okay. All right.
Do we have five minutes?
Yeah, if we don't mind, I'm going to call ad lib here. We're going to take a five-minute recess unless somebody's got anything else. We'll close the work session. We'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll reconvene here at, why don't we just say 10 minutes after the hour?
Good job.
All right. Thanks, everybody.